Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for the springtime and all the flowers. Thank you, Lord, for a new hopefulness that you've given us in terms of our government. And we pray, Lord, that you'll help us as citizens to do our part. And we pray that you'll bless this effort to curb child abuse, Lord. And we pray that you'll give us the right tools and the power of God to do the things that need to be done. And I pray, Lord, that you'll change hearts, that people will see that there's a lot more to love than just loving their own family. But they need to love children and other people's families, Lord, that they can help somehow or other. And help us to love our neighbor and ourselves, as you said. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have minutes for March twenty-fifth.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as written for March twenty-fifth.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the twenty-fifth of March minutes as presented for the discussion. Seeing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all closing. Next, we have on our agenda, it's Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have declaration we'd like to present. And at this time, if I could ask Lord to come up and Lord, whoever else is with you that would like to come up, and the commission will present this to you. Guys, if you want to stand over.
Thank you.
We'll stand over here. Thank you. And I'll read it. Whereas all children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment, and child well-being is a shared responsibility. And whereas child abuse respects no racial, religious, class, or geographic boundaries, and is a serious and growing problem for thousands of children in Missouri Anulon. And whereas children are the foundation for a prosperous and innovative society, and the foundation for child's growth and development is established when every community takes responsibility for creating healthy environments where children can thrive. And whereas a child's early experience of being nurtured and developing a bond with a consistent, caring adult affects all aspects of behavior and development, and is associated later in life with better academic grades, healthier choices, better health, positive peer interactions, and an increased ability to cope with stress. And whereas it is important for all citizens to become more aware of child abuse and the critical need for prevention, and LaCleve County recognizes the responsibility of every adult to protect children from all forms of child abuse, including sexual abuse, and recognizes the importance for all adults, youth-serving organizations, schools, and communities to form protective barriers around children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs are essential and succeed because of community partnerships created among citizens, social service agencies, schools, businesses, health facilities, law enforcement agencies, faith-based organizations, civic organizations, and other child-serving agencies. And therefore, we, the LaCleve County Commission, do hereby proclaim April twenty-twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We support child abuse prevention efforts and education, encourage all citizens to wear blue to build awareness about the importance of prevention of child abuse and neglect, inspire change by focusing on community activities and public policies that prioritize prevention and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children and families in safe, stable, nurturing environments. Now therefore, we, Randy Yanks, presiding commissioner, Eric Lindsay, eastern commissioner, and Joe Wasmer, western commissioner of LaCleve County, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-five Child Abuse Prevention Month. So here, let's all.
Sorry, that's a mouthful.
All, who, who, who did all that?
It was an aunts, I think.
And I would just say.
But that way it's read in the record.
You guys do an amazing job, so just keep it out.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate you guys and.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our agenda, and thank you for the invitation to your open house. So they've left the invitation here for us.
You bet.
We'll share, share that. Thank, thank you, Lord. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, LaCleve. Thanks, John.
You bet.
So we don't have any senior tax-free applications to.
Thank you, guys.
All we do.
Well, excuse me. It wasn't out front this guy.
Excuse me.
You just weren't out front.
Don't look at those very close.
Don't look at those very close.
People, we recognize them.
Just a total of twelve, is that what you're saying here? Is that what we got?
For this week.
Right. Make a motion to go ahead and receive these in as made here.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the SB one-ninety slash seven fifty-six slash senior tax-free applications as presented. Did I have a motion on that?
You know, I made the motion, he seconded it.
He ain't heard a discussion. Seeing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that.
You bet.
All right, so next we have John Shelton from the Lebanon Parks Board, and I assume also may be representing in a roundabout way the Veterans Board.
I have one Veterans Board as well.
Okay, and it's my understanding that you're here to receive the donation of the Humvee that we've had. And so, Joe, I'm going to turn this over to you. I know you've been working on this project, so if you want to give us an update, then we'll make that presentation.
Yeah, as far as that goes, I've asked John, and John and I talked here last week and stuff. And we had a few other questions on some things. That's why we tabled it up until this week, of course. So as far as that goes, we've had other interests and stuff come in, but I felt like this would be best served for the whole community for that Humvee to be able to see that. And as we had discussed earlier, so I'll just turn it back over to John there and let him go first.
Well, obviously, the Veterans Board has really done a wonderful job over there. You know, it started out with just bricks and a memorial. We've added a helicopter, we added the Tin Man. I don't know what his real name is right off the top of my head. I've called it Tin Man forever, so that's all I know. But anyway, from the engineering department that used to be displayed out here, I think we did it well when we put it over there and put lights on and stuff, so I thought it was a great addition. Then the tank came along and the anchor came along, so this would be a great addition to the park. This is probably going to be the last of this type of item to be put in there, obviously. There's only so much space and it's beginning to get full. So I'm not saying something else might not come along, but this could be the last item added to there. And Joe and I discussed it, you know, there were some questions I had concerning proper display of it. There are requirements when you display military items, paint, logos, and other things that the government requires. So we're going to go through those and make sure that those are all adhered to, so that we're presenting it the way that it's supposed to be presented. It's a little more complicated than just taking it off and saying, here it is. So, but other than that, we'll make it happen. So it's going to be a little bit before it actually hits the display floor. We're going to, I think the plan is to build a concrete pad for it to sit on. We're probably going to put some floor jat-type of items underneath it. It's stable, it's anchored down, but it also gets the wheels or the tires just barely off the ground or right on the top of the ground, so that over time they don't lose air and sink. And then we're always trying to fix the tires on it or those kind of things, so it'll be displayed properly. We will, at this point, probably just lock the doors, we'll take all the oil and transmission fluid out of it. Anything that could leak and cause, you know, some kind of damage to the ground around it or be unsightly. So we'll do those things, drain the fuel and that kind of stuff. Probably leave it pretty well intact. Other than that, we will find out what color to paint it. We'll have a probably same blasted painting before it goes on display. So it's going to be a little while. It's not going to be displayed tomorrow, but it will be displayed as soon as we can get all the work done to it.
You bet.
So other than that, we're excited. I think it'll be a great addition to the park. I know Veterans Board, you know, approved it immediately, so I hope this is something we can make happen. We appreciate the offer, Joe.
Thank you.
Let's present the child to.
Yep.
To.
Just lay it on the table.
You bet.
My thick.
We're good.
Yeah, he don't mind, don't mind. Yeah, no, I think that is, that's often be able to display that respectively.
Yes.
And everything, and that's what it needs. Other than being put in a dark warehouse somewhere where we've had it in the past several years, and nobody's getting any use out of it.
We will try to pick it up within the next week, so.
Just holler at me at any time. We'll try to organize and get, of course, with my other stuff that I've got going on, we'll have to get a timeframe on that. That won't be no big deal.
That's fine. These are mine.
It, yes, it, well, probably going to have the batteries and stuff charged up on it. But yes, it is told to be a running, driving unit.
So we'll probably run it out to Public Works and cover over it and have Casey look at it and get it all up to spec.
So I will go ahead and get that batteries and stuff up to where, and we will get it started prior to that.
Let's work on it one day next week. It's supposed to be raining this week, so.
Well, I can get that part worked on this week to get, go and get the batteries up and get it started this week. And then that way we'll get a tender on the batteries, make sure they're there, and then we'll be able to start it when you all are ready for it. That way, no holdup on our end for you guys.
Perfect.
John, thank you much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
It's always great to work with you guys.
See you, guys.
Take care. Thanks again, John.
Okay, the next item is Senator Brown's field rep Ray Schwartz, but he probably won't be here for about nine. So at that point, I'm going to go into general county business.
You bet. Getting some conservation rock haul laid out.
Okay, that's, that's good.
We're gaining on that. Of course, weather is tomorrow, rest of the week is going to hold them up because then we'll be able to push mud very well and get it laid in there right, but we're gaining on it. One of our newest operators, I guess, Dustin, he's, he's learning a little bit more on how to move down around that baserock. He's not had much experience with that, so visiting with him again this morning, he's lacking the way it's starting to go for him. So we learned quite a bit in the last couple of days. So other than that, just your normal deal on the roads. I've got one here I need to get with on Julie Road and find out for sure exactly what he's talking on. I visited with him yesterday evening, the owner of that citizen. But then I'm going to get with one of our operators. I don't want to pull Dustin away from doing that conservation rock unless it is raining, or we can do something different. So keep that moving.
Somebody expressed an interest in the pile of chunks of concrete and big rocks out at the Dry Knob Facility. We may not know for sure whose that is. Is that ours? Is that the state's?
It could be. Eric, the state had called a few months ago in regards to putting some material down there. But I think that was more the asphalt that maybe they had pulled up. The rock, I'm not sure where that would have came from.
Did you say it's some concrete too?
Looks like chunks of concrete and stuff. I mean, there's some big, big chunks of stuff.
Yeah, it could have, could have came from here, and we hauled it down there.
Okay. How long? It's almost, I don't know how long this has been there.
Oh, if it, if it was from our campus here, that would have been two, two years ago. We started in May. So I, I wouldn't have any problem. They just assume liability for being on our property. So whatever that looks like, it might be, you know, we have, you know, if there's something we would need to write up on them having liability or something like that, if we felt it's necessary. Because I'm assuming they're going to have some equipment down there that they're going to need to look it up.
Well, that is something that I did discuss with them, that if they were going to do it, they were going to be responsible for getting it out of there and not just some of it, all of it.
That's what I was getting ready to say. Are they interested in half? Are they going to take it all?
No, I mean, if I.
Full cleanup?
I would think that's the way I would want it anyway. If we're going to do this, let's, let's get rid of the whole.
Is there any chance that we might want it for these bridges for shoring?
It crossed my mind just a little bit.
I'll say, let's get with maybe John, a couple of guys, Roden Bridge, and kind of question them on what it is, where it come from, and what our intended use is at this time.
I'm sorry.
Jeremy Manning, maybe, to see if that would be beneficial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eric, are they needing a lot in a short timeframe? Or are they just needing some fill over a period of time?
I think they're needing quite a bit for what they're doing.
So with the two bridges that we have going in this year, the first one on Bobcat, I haven't been down there to inspect that.
And I haven't either.
So there might be, if they worked with that contractor, I'm just putting that out there as maybe a possibility. You know, the contractor may have somewhere to go with that. They may be using it for a purpose like Linda indicated. But if not, that may be another source for them.
Got it.
Yeah. I personally don't have any problem with it. Just, you know, just make it work so the liability's not on the county and they clean it up to your satisfaction. And we don't have a need for it. And if we did have a need and they want that, and then we could, and then if the contractor needed to bring some of that over to Dry Knob, so logistically, there's options.
When is Bobcat or them fixing it?
Two weeks ago, I heard three to four weeks. And that was from somebody that was there doing some construction on it. But I haven't heard anything for at least a couple of weeks on it.
Yeah, I kind of liked how Randy was stating there. If, depending on the intended use from the contractor themselves, if they could work out something there where the contractor didn't have to haul it somewhere, they could get it directly from one of those to take care of what their needs are for now, that might be a better deal, other than cleaning up there and then putting back in at Dry Knob again. Save some miles, some fuel, and benefit everybody, if that's a possibility.
Or we can.
And it may not be able to work together.
Or contact somebody from Casey.
Chase, do you have his information?
I don't. Well, I probably do somewhere.
Okay, if, if you need it, let me know. I have his contact information.
So your estimating on Bobcat, you think, is within a month?
What it sounds like.
Because they were shooting for May, I didn't know.
To what they talked like, I mean, they said everything was going ahead of schedule. Of course, this week may set them back a little bit, but. I'm like, this week or next week? But next week is probably out of the picture, so probably maybe the week after. I don't like getting my hopes up.
Right.
Been a while since I talked to somebody there that was on site.
When did they think of their starting plan?
That was, I think he said in May.
So when this finishes almost?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was contacted this week, actually last week, by a paint and sign company. And they'll be here one day this week, and I'm assuming, weather permitting, to put the lettering on the wall out here that we had signed a contract on last year, so that should be going up this week. And then the company that's doing the, the sealing and the repairing, the caulking around the windows, replacing that stopped by yesterday, and they'll probably be here in two weeks to start that project. And we probably should walk out there before we adjourn and look at the. They filled a couple of the mortar joints with some, some of the material they're going to be using. And we probably should look at that color and make sure we're okay with it before they, before they order that, you know, or install it, and then we're not happy with the color. Because I think we ran into that previously on the building where, when it was done, they ran out of one color and they used another, and I, it won't happen with this company, I'm sure. But we want to make sure that color's right, so we can, we can walk out there. All right, let the routine business, we'll just jump down to that.
So are they going to do all signage?
No, no, they're just doing the, we haven't seen the final drawing on, on what we left.
So they're bringing programs.
They're, they're bringing the signage for that wall out there, and they're going to install it, yeah. On the nine-one-one staircase tower, that's not been approved yet. We contracted for it, we just haven't approved it. I'm going to get a couple copies made up. Okay, so I would like us to go ahead and advertise for a Roden Bridge Foreman position. This is the, what I did, I had, just to start the process here, I had taken information from another, another county in actually, not a county in Missouri. And I condensed that down to one page and putting this out there for us to consider so that the applicants would have something in front of them, so they know what our expectations are. So I would ask you to review that, make comments, so we can get kind of a final draft going. It's, it's, it's pretty detailed, but I think if you read through it, it also, I think the detail will benefit us mutually for the Roden Bridge Foreman to know what they, what is expected of them. And it will also allow us to hold them accountable to what our expectations are. So I'd like you to consider that. We need to put that out soon, sooner than later, I believe. And we also need to discuss what the salary range would be. So typically, when we put a job notice out there, we will, we'll put some type of salary range. And so I would like the blessing of the commission that we go ahead and start taking applications for them. Entertain any discussion on it. And this, this is, this is just a, a draft. So if you, if you see something that, I tried to eliminate all the, all the duplicate statements that we had on the other and try and include as much as I, I could without making it.
Well, I like this one a lot better.
Yeah, then a couple of the others that I'd, I'd looked at as well, and then one that you had sent us. Went through it and made some notes and stuff on it right at my desk. So far, I don't even need to go even take a look at any of that with what's going on here. But yeah, we do need to move forward with getting them out there for applications to start getting somebody for that position. But everything that's coming on with summer and stuff coming up and all the projects and stuff that we've got at hand, we need to get somebody in there so that they can all get acquainted and working well together.
Settle down.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have suggestions on what you would like to put out there for a range, knowing where, where we're at on our current schedule? Do you, do you have thoughts you would like to put in the, in the notice so that they would know what the expectation might be?
You talking about the monetary, don't you say?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I mean. Or for what I would think, I mean, I would think would be in that forty-five, fifty, pretty easy to get somebody interested to come in to fill that position if we're going to try to still run it with just one overseer of all of that. If that's what our thoughts are.
I was somewhere in that same range. Forty-five to fifty-five, maybe.
So normally where we would post this is the obvious, you know, we'll post it would be at the Job Center. We'll post it on our, on our website, on the county website, and we will also put it on Facebook. And all, all applications would be dropped off at the front desk. And probably once that's out there, we start to look at the response we receive. And then hopefully we'll get some applicants right away. And we'll be able to evaluate those within the next two to three weeks. I think that would be a reasonable timeline. So if, if you're okay with that, then I would like to go ahead and get this, get this posted. And we probably have something in the past that we have, we've put out there. And we can, we can put this information out there with it.
Morning, how are you?
Okay.
Wind's blowing again.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's going to get windy today.
Sure is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wanting to spray some of them purple weeds down there in my new dress, but that ain't going to work. Just because I talked to the guys too many. Everything going smooth for you, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, Ray will be, will be with you in just a minute. We're just doing, doing a review here. You okay with it?
Yeah, I believe, I believe, I would like to go. We need to, we don't, we need a motion to move forward with that as far as what this is.
We'll just put it out there. Okay. Right, right. Thank you.
Pardon me.
That's your costume.
Yeah.
And I could send it to you electronically if that's.
Prefer.
Prefer.
Put it down on my desk, it's right here. I lied to you. It was in my desk, it's right here.
So Ray, tell us, tell us that the Missouri Legislature is doing counties no harm.
They ain't supposed.
You're not supposed to laugh at that.
Whoa, and you're not supposed to hesitate either.
Isn't that a way to welcome you?
Yeah, well, on the sales tax, justice swears that the Senate will shut it down.
Okay.
And that needs to be done. And I'm talking maybe a little, and I talked to the governor, but I told him, why don't you just leave all the taxes alone for a while? I think if they're trying to talk about doing a waiver income tax, it'll be the worst thing they can ever do on poor people. If they're gonna fund it with a s- sales tax, and that's what they're talking about. And I told him, and I, I know I'm supposed to be a field person, but I kinda tell him what I think. And I told him, why don't you go a year and just let everything alone with the taxes? The county will handle there and see where we're at. Because this budget's way lower than it was last year, we lost, you know, that federal money ain't there. The state, but it was fifty-five billion last year, and it's forty-seven billion this year, and expect it to be forty-three billion next year. That's a pretty big chunk in two years to, better wait and see whether you can pay your bills before you start talking about cutting taxes. I don't know how you all feel about it, but right now, I, it seems like everything they do up there hurts smaller county, rural counties, really it does. And I hate to have to say that, you know, right now, St. Louis, you know, even Lebanon, you're not compared to Columbia and Kansas City and St. Louis, they can out-vouch right now. And, you know, I was talking to a guy from Washington, Indian County, who's wanting to change the sales tax. He said, well, you had a windfall. I said, what windfall, I didn't know. And he said, and I asked him, I said, you ever been in Marius County? He said, no. He said, why? I said, how in the world could you sit here and tell me what Marius County needs? And that's where I live, and you've never been there? And I said, I drove through your county twice. If you got a windfall, why don't you go back and talk to the commissioners about it and let the rest of us alone? And I wasn't too popular in that room right now. But anyhow, it just seems like somebody's gotta be trying to mess with the counties all the time. And, uh, Brown is really good at being a rural guy with the counties. And of course, I know last week, I was there, the governor signed the bill to take over St. Louis Police, and that was probably a good thing. And there are several things was in there, you know, for, and then they passed out this telehealth. That's probably a good thing, um, Justin Brown was supporting that. And I didn't realize this, your doctor here in Missouri is, can't prescribe you medicine without seeing you. I didn't know that, my local doctor, if I need something, he calls it in. So Justin said, you know, it's foolish if you, um, just need some medicine. I mean, Jeff said he had to drive back to Raleigh, so he deals with somebody. I don't know, I, that will probably pass. I'll go back to.
Does it have a bill number, Ray?
Uh, I didn't write that on the bill, but it, it's called telehealth.
Telehealth, okay.
Come out. And something here and I was, uh, like MRPC, and then that shit going through, but I'm gonna remind Justin this, I'll see him next Tuesday. Let's not wait till the last minute because nobody's posting it, but you're sitting there and kinda letting it go by. And we need that, really, and I think you'll agree.
Absolutely.
So they're dealing, that's something I think they will get on through. And of course, the House is pretty well with the governor on the school deals and the schools don't think it's enough money. So I think they'll wind up, they will get their whole formula. And I've got mixed emotion about these schools a little bit. Even our little school, when I went to school, they didn't have an assistant superintendent and assistant principal. And teachers haven't assistance to grade their books for them, and they, they're getting paid for it. And I mean, there was twenty and twenty-five in the classroom, and they graded our, and they, they kept us behaved too. So I want teachers to get good, get paid, but maybe they need to do a little of their own work too, so. And that's, I just, maybe not everybody agrees with him, but that was one of the things that's brought up up there, you know? And it's all right, maybe to, during Vienna, teachers don't grade their own papers. They got assistants who comes in and does what you know. So that's kinda like, you guys, you get the like, hearing and hiring somebody to do your job, I think. But that's the stuff they're talking about.
Ray, before you go off that subject, uh, House, the, uh, Senate, uh, I'm not su- I followed a little bit. But as the, uh, open enrollment, didn't that pass the House?
Yeah, and I'd say the Senate, they're, that's pretty well, there's a lot of lobbyists pushing that up there to.
Okay, and the senators on board with the open enrollment?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
I've got mixed emotion about it.
Okay.
But I don't see where it'll affect a lot of people. If you read that open enrollment, like, if you wanna leave Lebanon and go to some person else, they gotta accept you. And you gotta take them to wherever their bus says, they don't have to come here and get you, so. Out here, I can see, my son was showing me there in St. Louis, he lives in St. Charles, they got good schools there, well, they send their private school. You may be able to see a better school right over there from where you're sitting, you know, they're just a couple of blocks away. This is really a bad area, and that's a good school, I can see wanting to move. I don't think it affects us out here, cause where are you gonna go? From here to Waynesville or something, I mean, it's too far a distance to people. They wanna go, and this, this guy from, he lives over there by, by Burnham, and he was a rep and a good sensible guy. But his areas down there, you're familiar with, uh, at Reynolds County and then, you know, it's very sparsely populated. And they said consolidate schools, he said, yeah, he said, I got a high school with fifty-seven kids. But they're already tripping twenty-five, why don't you wanna trip with another fifty-five to get them to a school? So places like that, really, people in, even Jeff City, I unders- don't understand them, you know? So that's always gonna be a little bit of a fight. And, yeah, the open enrollment, I'd be surprised, and, cause the governor's part. So I think if they get it on his best, he'll sign it. And he's, he does, he's not wanting, they got a bill on, but he's supposed to figure out where you can get the money back. But if you read in there on this income tax, they weren't charging more when you buy a vehicle. They weren't charging more when you get your license. And these were actuary people that figured this out, I wouldn't, they said it's gonna take a four percent sales tax to replace it. Now, firstly, four percent sales tax, everything I named you will hurt the average poor, hard-working person, I think you all agree.
Well, the reality there, Ray, is that probably a good percentage of those in rural Missouri in that income threshold, they're not paying any income taxes.
That's what I'm saying.
So, so the transfer to sales tax will be an additional cost of living and burden on them.
I agree a hundred percent with you, cause you know, the average, and even the federal government, I don't know why they, who would not want me, but taxes on social security, uh, lower income, don't pay on their social security anyhow. No, you gotta make quite a bit of money before you start paying on your social security. And, you know, I'm gonna pick this wrong way, I, I, I said, I'm glad I have to pay on mine, at least you got a good income, you know? So a lot of these things are not thinking through. It sounds good, but they're gonna hurt people, working people worse than you think. Now, you just take somebody, we got Quaker down there, they holler eleven hundred people between Free Bird and Vienna. But a husband and wife can make a hundred thousand down there. This day and age, if you got a couple of kids, that's not much money. And, you know, if you start burdening with some more stuff, it's, uh, I think, right now, it's pretty hard on the working person everywhere. And I, yeah, we got, and I shouldn't complain because we got rentals. But my son-in-law, that's what he, his business is, he's, uh, do two, a duplex in Old Summit and Fulton. Will cost two thousand, twelve hundred a month. Now, you put a couple of them, twelve hundred a month to live there and got a kid or two, they'll, it doesn't seem possible ever save enough money to buy a house. You know, that twelve hundred dollars used, we've been a hell of a house down there, so. So hopefully someone just will back up a little bit. I can't see the, either that or the wages, working people's gonna have to get more money, and that's inflation, so. That was the thing they've been discussing, Jeff City and I've been listening to, but I don't have to answer. And then HB seventy-eight, that's, uh, kind of a purchase. This is, says that your house, you gotta keep it at your purchase. If we buy a ha- if I bought a house today, you would never raise that taxes until here in the county or anywhere. Until it's sold again, or, and that, that's something I don't agree with. Either a house you bought ten years ago, you know it's worth more money than it is today. But that's the house, I don't know whether that will pass one way or the other, but that's one bill they did get out of committee this last week. You would go by like, if you go out here and buy, build a new house this year, that value will stay the same till you resell it or you add more on to it.
But Ray, wouldn't that, and I'm just talking out loud for the sake of discussion.
No, this is something I want to hear you to take back to them.
So, so just quick thoughts. That would actually possibly restore some financial stability because then those young families would, would have certainty. And since we, uh, most of our economy is based on consumption, it'd be more than likely that they would, uh, be able to purchase necessities and might have something left over, uh, with, uh, being able to purchase other items. Uh, if they knew that their taxes over the ten-year ownership period, let's say, say if they kept that house ten years. Um, you know, it's conceivable their, their taxes in the environment we're in, with house values that have just, you know, increased exponentially. You know, taxes went up with them, and then our political subdivisions, uh, uh, have a tendency not to, uh, roll back the levies. So, uh, that might not be, be a, a bad piece of legislation.
What I'm wanting to do is ask you, can you, the counties, is, will that work for you all?
Well, so most rural counties, Ray, like us, I mean, our levy is less than three cents.
Excuse me, I ain't allergic, I'm, I'm allergic to cedar and everything out there, and we've been working with.
So the impact on us would be probably very minimal, counting. But what might, what might happen is that if they had some discretionary income, they consume, that, uh, results in increased sales tax. So it actually might benefit the county as opposed to.
Cause they have other money to spend, like you say. Well, the thing was.
It's easier to budget when they know where, where they're at.
Well, see, and just, I'm from a different generation. You buy a house now, and I'm a good friend actor down there, they put their insurance, their taxes.
Escrow.
Everything on the payment. And back when, well, we were, you know, our house went with the farm when I bought it, that, and fixed it, you know? But, so, you know.
Yeah, you don't have, you don't have to escrow them, I mean, that's a, that's a privilege, that's something you can do, but you don't have to at all.
No, I know you don't have.
You can pay those bills out separately on your own, so they do that for the convenience, because so many people don't know how to budget for that.
No, they don't, so they just, absolutely, so you're right, that's what, if you, I'll take that back, I think I'll go back and tell you that this is what you said.
And then another aspect of that, because the, the counties that have enacted, enacted their half-sent general revenue to roll back property taxes. So when we collect more sales tax, then we roll back our levy anyway.
Anyway.
And so, uh, that's another net gain for, uh, those individuals as well. Now, I guess the question would be, uh, so it would freeze it, then similar to what our, our senior tax freeze is? Is that, is all I'm hearing? Okay, okay.
I didn't get to read it all, I just read on my phone last night what come out, and it's.
Was that out of Senator House?
It's out of.
Out of House, House Bill seventy-eight? Okay.
Seven eighty.
Seven eighty, okay.
Eighty, okay.
Okay.
And another one, HB two oh seven, I don't know why not, those are fees they want to increase on the Department of Revenue that you pay. Not, I ain't too sure the Department of Revenue needs any more money, but.
What was that bill? I missed that one.
Two seven eight?
Two seven eight?
Two, one seven eighty, and one with revenues, two oh seven.
It's two oh seven.
And you can look them up. And I'm sure that's on my phone, but anyhow, they put that on my phone, but it's kinda small. And I guess that doesn't affect, that is the state revenue that they're gonna raise that on, isn't it? State revenue, Department of Revenue, that'd be the state, it's, I don't.
So is it fees on like vehicle registrations or what?
It just says fees for Department of Revenue, it takes the state on everything, but it's gonna be.
Yeah.
So that's one, I'm gonna ask a little bit, have a look into the mixture. And these are ones that's coming out of the House. The House just came a whole bunch of them out, you know? At least they're doing some of it to some of them. Then, of course, Dave Griffin's got one that I think's a good one, it will come out. Where veterans can go to any doctor and still get paid. And I didn't realize till a good friend of mine down there died of cancer. When Eric Dixon, while he's fooling around with the veterans, he finally just went to another doctor. And they didn't wanna pay for it, but he said, at least I'm alive. And I, I don't know why it's any different than Medicare, Medicaid, or anything else. If they're here in Lebanon, and there's a good doctor here, why can't they go get to it? And that's a bill that I think will go through, and then I want your, your opinion, think.
Oh, I like that for transportation purposes and other things like that, I mean, it saves them so much. I mean, when you get to those veterans and, and the elderly on that, you know, it's hard on them to make a lot of those trips from here to Columbia and do things.
No, and I, and I didn't realize this, Dave Griffin, and I have good friends, and he's gotten me involved with, I didn't make Vietnam because of car wreck, I still went a little because of that. And anyhow, at least I can, and I've gotten involved with, and everybody says, oh, they take care of veterans, they don't take care of veterans, we're the ones. You know, if they fall in a truck or something, you know? One that I, you don't know him, but Ronnie Maher's a good friend of mine, we grew up, lived by. And he was in Vietnam, and he called me one day, he said, Ray, I got a guy that needs help. And I said, okay, I can, but I know two guys can, I said. Dave Griffin and Jim Shuvi was retired out of the guard. This guy went to Afghanistan, come back and worked for the guard. And when they had to take them shots to keep their job, they finally admitted, they didn't shake it up. Good, you might get water, you might get a hat worn, I might get, and he got the full, and he shakes, and he lost his job. Got headaches, you know, he, it wa- wasn't a problem, and the federal pays him monthly, uh, income. But, uh, federal and the state was fighting over who was gonna pay his medical bills. He said, I'm going broke trying to pay my medical bills, so I got him up there, that guy's trading. Why should that even happen to you? It happened at the guard, it's all taxpayer, that should've been paid by them right away and went on. Crap like that they put up with all the time, so. I had a client over here at Crawford down in Asian Lodge, and he didn't, he should've been getting checks. The first one they got was eleven months later, and his wife had to send it back cause he died. She said, yeah, they paid him back for that year, but they were broke the whole year. We should, they shouldn't have to go through all that crap, so anything they are willing to help with, veterans, I think, we owe it to them, so. That thing, and that's several then coming out days of, he's very good, and he was a great for Ray in Vietnam. But he said Vietnam, they came back with different problems than the people that's coming back now from. He said, yeah, we had the dope, and we had the people calling us names. But those people over there, they don't know what they shoot at them anymore, yes, you know, them company. So those are things we need to work with. And of course, I'm like, probably like you guys, I'm leaving that plank there an awful lot.
Absolutely.
So that's one of the things that I think will come through. And then there, there's a bill. And then there, there's a bill coming out on this, your minimum wage, that those sick leave, cause they don't, they don't, I agree with them. The average young, let's say you got a small business, are you, will it be hardly feasible for you to have to pay a sick leave on somebody for. I forget how many days for every day they work, that's gonna get tough on them, so. It, um, minimum wage won't change, but requiring that you have to pay your sick leave so many days. Uh, I don't know how you feel about that, this would do away with that. Instead of, if you got over fifteen employees, I think you gotta give them, uh, a day of sick leave forever. Forty day work or something like that, so that can build up quite a bit for somebody. If this goes through, then that won't exist, the sick leave.
And that one passed, right, went through the House?
It went through the House. Put this way, they passed it over for the Senate to read it and they haven't done it this one yet. And that's about all I got, unless there's, I want to hear from you guys, want to take back to him. And that's about all, it's, the rest of the stuff right now is just stuff to get them out. You know, of course, they passed a bill, transgender, skate, play girls' sports and why they have to waste our tax money, common sense, take care of that. But they got that fast, you know, and I think we should. Well, they had that happen in worlds where my grandsons, well, the youngest one graduated the college, a girl, wherever she competed in wrestling. And her mother happened to know somebody there and she called and said, you know, your girl's gonna be wrestling, wrestling a man. And she didn't go there, she wasn't, that don't make sense, I mean. And I mean, it was very obvious, they showed a picture, I thought like, it was built like you. I mean, muscle wise, I mean, compared to a girl.
Yeah, so.
And they spent quite a bit of time on that stuff. Of course, I'm from those, we like to turn up house, saw that real darn quick. A lot of that's going on up there, there'll be a lot of work going on now, the next eight weeks now that they got back. And at least the Senate is working pretty good this year, getting along. And that's good, and even the House, and I think, now I'm bragging on the governor, but he's a good friend, like, he's always been pretty good and worked with the Democrats and the Republicans. And I think he's getting, they're pretty, he does a pretty good job with that, you know, so, and that helps and, cause I've met some. There's some good Democrats up there too, just like there's some good, I'd say ninety-eight percent of the people up there are just people like you and I. That people don't realize, some of them people leave St. Joe's, man or woman, on Sunday night, and they're going from family till Thursday night, just to serve their district, you know, so. I think most of them up there trying, and last year Bill Igoe was wanting his name out and he really missed it. Me and him ain't no good friends anyhow, anyhow, so everything is rolling pretty smoothly up there right now. And basically, is there anything I can take back other than you kind of said, just tell me? And I'll follow through on him and I may just call you sometimes and this is what went on this week or so, was to bother you. And then, and last year, you knew, in May, I didn't bother to come around, there was nothing to tell you, nothing happened, so. I think you'll see what more happened, because they're starting to pass bills now that they didn't even think of last year, so. You guys got your feet wet, I guess, by now, huh? One thing I'm thinking about over here, cedars are taking this country, and that's something to think about. Kansas declared a red cedar and notorious weed, they burned plenty of hills down here, but driving up to us, they did. On these highways, I can remember, I worked over here forty years ago as a district manager, they were that tall now, they're. And, you know, they're just, even on my farm, I've got a guy doing it, but. Wife and I don't always grill on trees, they didn't have got that little blue lights, they're going to the salt bit also, we're bending them out, but. You know, it might be something, this may not be just a MODO problem, it might be a state problem down the road. If you got cattle stuff, you know what I'm talking about. I carry a clipper in my gator all the time and you probably do too, and so.
An axe.
Huh?
I carry an axe in mine.
Yeah, I got, so, that's something that, when they have transportation over there in MRPC, I want to mention that to Preston and see.
Let me, let me toss this out here and probably in the, in the hierarchy of importance, of everything that we deal with, with all the. Financial issues, with all the social issues and so forth, this is probably gonna sound pretty, uh, pretty, uh, lame, but. You know, we have, uh, Route sixty-six coming next year, the hundredth anniversary. We have the, uh, world soccer, I believe it's called FIFA, I believe, going Kansas City, so. There's gonna be a lot of, uh, international visitors that's gonna travel Missouri, whether it's Route sixty-six or whether they're in Kansas City and they drop down and. And visit some of the, uh, other attractions. When you drive around, do a survey of the litter. If you look on I forty-four at any given time, you drive La Cleet County, county, state littered roads, it's an embarrassment. Now, our community should step up and do what we need to do to clean up our roads, but, uh. And I can't expect MODO to stop I seventy construction and pick up trash, so this is gonna sound pretty lame. But, uh, to me, that's becoming a real issue. I had two calls last week from local residents regarding trash in our, our county. But then, but then if you go out along the interstate, you'll, you'll find the same thing. And then depending on where you're driving the state, uh, as you leave La Cleet County and you go up to Camden County. You'll see less trash up there because I've seen it firsthand on two different trips to the lake in the last two months. Where there are people out picking up trash and those aren't volunteers, they're either state employees, which I can't confirm. Or an organization that's being monitored by, uh, the state. Or local maybe using, uh, some of the, uh, maybe some of the inmates, I'm not sure. But, but it seems to vary, but that's really becoming an issue.
A very big issue, I drive it a lot.
Yeah.
And it's a disgrace to see our highway sometimes, the trash did it, you know. And I wonder if them people would like, could we just throw it out in their yard as our bodies think was and stuff, they don't think. How hard is it to keep it in the car till you get home?
Yeah, so I, I don't know if there's enforcement me- mechanisms and I'm not one that want, would want to make. Uh, uh, criminals out of something that seems as innocent as this. But, uh, but we tend to see it on the, on the roads where there are, uh, uh, trash haulers companies. Uh, and we've tried to, uh, tried to work with the local, uh, companies, uh, and it's helped. But, uh, there, there needs to be maybe a little more thought on that, I mean, America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday next year.
I know.
And, uh.
That's something I'll take back to Justin.
Yeah.
Cause I've noticed it a lot, you know, it, it doesn't say much to your pride you got in your country, and I think that's what you want to get across. I am sure, and I've been around Lebanon here a lot, there's a lot of nice pretty places you get, here in town, you've improved, and I mean. You can get down towards, after a while, I'm not going Highway five, there used to be all them pretty dairy farms and they're still nice farms, but there's a lot of trash blows out there. And I mean, we, we should take a little more pride, I think, but now where I live down there, they had these here guys that was getting out of prison. And they worked with MODO and they never got no pay, but, and they, they cleaned up trash and limbs and stuff and everything back on the road. And I think it was good for them and they were really, they're the, were people that were getting released in the next year, you know. And they could work, and I think they paid them a little, not a lot, and everybody just get the heck out of there and work and. Well, I talked to several of them, I wouldn't have been afraid of any of them, you know, and that helped us a lot down there, but. Uh, and another thing, it made my, gee, we'll talk about that, we wouldn't have so much in these landfills if they burned some of this stuff. Why can't you burn paper, why can't you burn, you know what I mean, with incinerator? What aggravated me when my daughters, when this house she first had, they needed a new roof up there at the house. And it wasn't that very house, it was gonna cost her to get three hundred dollars to get the chingles removed. But they were gonna take them right across for the highway patrol there, that's where the field is right there at Marv River and burn it. Got dumpster dump, we got taken over and I told them to keep three hundred dollars, I'm bringing old farm truck, they dumped it on it, I put it in the ditch, burnt them too. That don't make a lot of sense to me, if they can burn it there. That's better, I guess, to fill in the landfill up, but I can't see giving three hundred dollars, maybe a hundred would have been all right. There's things, it causes the tar, the solid waste districts, as I fought for several years back, and I think you agree, they have helped the county a lot. We cleaned up a lot of tars and stuff, I think you have here over here too. And, and so, but that's all, it takes manpower and I just, a few people with a little pride could help. And I know, my wife and everybody tells me I'm a bit, I'm too particular, but that's the way. I said, when I bought that old place, I'd like to have a picture of it, but maybe I'm a little bit too particular, but along my county road, I'll go up there, I'm at Ford River. And I bet y'all pick up two, five gallon buckets of cans and bottles. And on about a mile and a half between the two farms every month, I don't mind them driving through there and drinking their beer or whatever. Why the hell can't they keep the trash?
They got stop the gas station, they got trash cans, where I load some of mine, you know, there's stuff everywhere.
You've probably got the same problem over here, probably driving their old rockets and.
Oh, yeah.
And as far as forty-four and seventy, and I like Don Mayo, but he's a, like a bulldog when it comes to. He's arguing that we didn't need for the six lanes on seventy, just, I said, no, we need it on forty-four and seventy. If you travel, now coming over here this morning, I'd like to know how many trucks. I mean, I traveled it, you know, it's, he left a truck port there at St. Roberts to come over here like I did this morning. And you won't get around to trucks till you get almost seven highway or past, because they'll be out, you know, they're slept all their night. So I hope to get on through, work these highways all the way through six roads. And they're, they've come out Saint Louis with it quite a bit, that makes a difference. Seventy was picked for because it already had the, everything to ride away and the environmental thing, uh, so it was ready, shovel ready and forty-four wasn't, so. And they're supposed, I'd like to see them vote for you someday, they'll have to be if you're gonna have the traffic. And other than that, I, I'll try to take back everything and the trash is, and another thing, up there in the county that. Wouldn't vote to redo the cheese and the ball fields up there, they're, they're crazy for a month. And they done that with, if you've ever been in Kansas racetrack, that could have been in Missouri. But the people going down there said they didn't want the traffic. It's right on the other side of Kansas City, Kansas is that break, they lost all of their revenue and they got all the noise anyhow. So some of that, you start and think the money that those two, uh, chiefs and the raws bring in. Maybe you ought to keep that in Missouri if you can, I think, I know the governors, sort of people's, you know. You don't realize how much money that brings in to the county and stuff, and the state, so.
Yeah, I think it all comes back to individual responsibility on the trash or about every other issue we could discuss. Uh, it really comes back to the individual.
A lot of it.
Yeah, so.
Getting back down to your morals.
Well, you're all old enough to be raised in a different generation, it seems like we got now. Of course, I'm old enough to be there in early on seventy-eight, but they always talk about the brakes to police the other stuff. We just asked a cop, but we just wouldn't have sat down for a week, so now, you know, they don't. You stop the idiots saying, just cuss years to say good morning and, so, I'm laying that on my parents.
Are you going to, down to Wright County from here?
Yeah, I am.
Well, give them, uh, give them, uh, a shout out from La Cleet County.
I will, yeah, left door, that one get down, they're good old boys down there, they don't get no hurry. The one, the last time I was down there, my quarter after eleven, the other guy, and I said, I wanted to create lunch, but it's been a comeback. But today I wanna get back to our grandson's ball game over there in Larosa, I got plenty of time, so I'll do it. Yeah, but I always enjoy going down here, I gotta show you. Picture here if I can, right, but. This grandson here, he was working three years on a farm with me and he's a, got a, but last Monday night, his little boy was playing, his. Little brother was playing fish, and I said, hold him, why don't you just come down Tuesday and grandma'll fix your big dinner, we'll know. One of them weighed fifteen pounds, one fourteen, I'm like, and we caught about five like that, I need to get them out there.
You bet.
And so, but anyhow, I'm gonna kind of miss him, he's been off good health and. Just he's got a, he's going to electrical engineer and he's likely getting a position, a moderner engineer around this, so.
Yeah, it is good.
Give those, uh, give the Senator, uh, uh, a shout out from us, tell them we appreciate your service up there. Uh, Phil Zach and the other commissioners down in, in Wright County, we said hi and, uh. We appreciate you being here, Ray.
Well, I hope, I hope I do something good, I enjoy what I'm doing and I didn't realize. Anytime, I think all of you got my business card, if you want Justin to hear something, give me, or even somebody else, just give me a call. And my son, why don't they just call it off, if you've been there and worked, them girls get so many calls in one day. I mean, and some of them don't have nothing and they put him over here on his computer, but he may not get time to read them till three or four days. What you tell me today, next Tuesday, he will hear over in one week, I'm gonna be up there this week. Cause they're, he's pretty busy and hard to see and I gotta have an MRI on my shoulder, the day I can see him, so. What we talked about here, you will, he will hear about next Tuesday, he's gonna.
You bet, and I gotta take up for Diane, she does an excellent job.
We couldn't run that without her.
And, you know, and, and, and I'm sure you guys do good, but I know, I know her very well.
You couldn't run that without her, uh, she's, she was up there when you were up there.
She was, she was my LA and, uh, she's, she's the best.
She is one, she takes calls at home and everything, she's very good. And she, well, see, then he got, on spring break, he went to Ireland and then he was supposed to fly into, I forget what, and then they transferred to New Germany. So they were running off was last week when I was up there, the girls was, so, but Diane's very good, but there's several of them.
Yeah.
Women are very.
Oh, there's no doubt about that, but, but I know, I know she's good. You guys wanna go out and look at that, uh, field on, probably should, like, I need to stretch for a minute. Ray, thank you, Diane.
Thank you all for having me. I won't take more of your time, but don't ever feel what I'm saying, if you call me this week, next Tuesday, he'll hear about it. If you call the office and he gets on his computer, it might be a reason, it may not be, and if it's something important, I'll get ahold of him and say that. I see you're the answers for, I text him often, so, thank you for your time and, anytime I can help you out, I probably won't bother you again till about last April, the first of May. Cause then that, that'll be the last two weeks what we'll have to watch that they don't shove up something, and you know how that works that last week. They'll shove something in there as a rider or something, we wanna keep, that's how one ninety got on there, several other, you know, somebody shoves it in as a. A rider, you know, and they'll, that, you know, that last week, they can do a lot of damage. That last week, they can do a lot of damage.
You bet, it's true.
We'll see you all later.
Make it right.
See, Ray, maybe before we go out there, I'll just ask Jack, Jack, any public comments, items listed on the agenda?
No.
Okay, any public comments, items not listed on the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, then I, I need to stretch, but I wanna show you that before I forget, to see if you're okay with that, that color.